About the grant, when do you know the amount of the grants from the state library?
It's, I apply every year and it's the same, the same.
It's just.
It's the same. It stays at 25,000 since the county, it's based on the county population. And since the population hasn't increased, it stays the same. The good thing is that they keep, I keep applying and they keep giving us that money.
So with inflation and everything, they haven't done, and with the, the, I don't know, the employment, you know, the base employment has gone up, right?
Yeah, and that was.
Responded to that with an increase.
Right. And the good thing is that I was able to take, that was one of the reasons that I asked for the position to be full time in Tubac because we weren't able to cover the three positions like I had mentioned in the last meeting. The three positions.
Minimum.
Yeah, because of the minimum wage, correct?
Okay, thank you. And Ed, could you update us on the library friends?
Sure, no problem. We were able to successfully conduct a free book raffles in Rio Rico and Tubac and Sonoyta and Nogales. Again, yes, we were successful in securing patrons. And my argument was that we recruit patrons from each of the library branches that were card carrying holders. And we managed to do that with Marva and Anna in Nogales. And then Maria Luz Verdugo in Rio Rico. And Charlotte Nelson in Sonoyta, in Tubac. And Valerie in, on the staff at Sonoyta was able to finish it also. So all the raffles went through successfully without any problem. And Friends is going to be having a meeting after this meeting. And we're going to be discussing bylaws in particular.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
I will add that the Sonoyta raffle did not take place. I just returned from being away, so it will be next Wednesday.
Oh, it's.
And, yes, and the little receptacles are full. So I guess they've had a lot of people coming into the library. So we'll be doing that Wednesday. That will be the final one, the giveaway. Great, okay. Thank you. Nothing else? All right, let's look at the approval of the minutes. Have you had a chance to look over the minutes? And if so, Marva?
Yeah. The minutes are ready for nomination to approve.
All right.
Or a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, wait a second.
So move.
Okay, and therefore we have approved the minutes. And now let's look at the, these are the summaries, your board reports for each library. And that will be brief and no proposals, discussions, deliberation or legal action with respect to these reports. So Anna, what's up?
Just following up on what Denise said about the mobile library and the library working together on off hours, Saturdays and evenings. We were together, Brianna's in charge of the mobile library and she's doing a great job. But we were at Patagonia at a Read-a-thon or something in the evening. And it just went really well because children can get a library card of their parents or their guardian is with them. And so having the mobile library there and, and the, you know, staff from the, from the public library, we have more and more people really excited about getting library cards. And, you know, these are pandemic children, so they're so excited, you know? And they, you know, that they can do that and the parents are excited too. So I'm sure that the numbers as far as library cards and people checking out of the library, it has gone up. But it's true, it's usually evenings to be able to get the parents involved or Saturdays. So thank you very much for making that available. As far as the mobile library, again, Brianna has these printouts to make sure that the Facebook link is available to people in the community for activities. And so I really appreciate the fact that the library is keeping up the Facebook page because, you know, it talks about things all around the county. And then she also created a little card for Simply E. And so people get really excited because they know that once they get their library card, they have access to the New York Public Library Systems eBooks and, and audiobooks. And also, so a lot of good things are happening within that partnership. So thank you, thank you. And then I just handed out, we had talked about the time capsule. I know we're not to discuss anything, but if you just look through those pictures and the prices that we have, at least here at the Newberry, Newberry Museum in Tubac. I mean, that would be a good place to start. But again, it's not to be discussed, but I sent it to your email also. So if you just take a look at that and we'll talk about it maybe next time.
We'll put on the agenda for next.
Thank you.
Good, okay. And Brianna, do you have anything to add to the mobile library that you've been working with? No? Well, thank you. Thank you for your good work. Ed, anything to report on the library activities?
Just a question on the mobile library. When I attended city council meetings, the big discussion on that was always related to chauffeurs.
Drivers.
And drivers. And I wonder if that's still a prevailing issue?
For the most part, it hasn't been an issue. Typically, it's been myself. I've been the one taking it all over.
You've been driving it?
Yeah. It's very simple. There's not any complications to driving it. It's just, it's very, it's very easy. So no, it hasn't been a problem. And we do have a list of other employees within our, our office that in case, in case that, that I won't be able to, we have at least four other people that are authorized to drive it.
And is it scheduled at different sites in the, in the geographic area? Or is it library branches?
At the moment, we're doing it as people request it. We don't necessarily have a set schedule because we don't have exact places of where we're doing it. So right now we're just doing it as schools or organizations request us.
Okay, thank you.
Are we doing, can you do questions? Are these reports due now? Okay. I wasn't sure about the discussion, you know, ask questions, you have them. But I guess we're not supposed to deliberate or make discussions. But, okay, anything else? You have a report?
Question for Ann, where would the financing come from?
Oh, I think we'll, we'll talk about that next, next month. It will be on the agenda.
We can't discuss it right now.
We're not having a meeting next month.
Yes, we are, it's June.
June.
The July meeting will not take place.
We're trying to figure out the schedule.
Yes, I think in the minutes that may appear because this has been discussed in the minutes before. So I don't know if you mentioned pricing, but we'll go deep, more deeply into this at our next meeting in June. Okay. Any other library reports? I, I just wanted to update you on the Sonoyta library. The fax machine is still not working and it's an extremely important machine. It's the only public fax machine in, in Sonoyta, Elgin and Canella. People really do depend on that. Let's see, the book giveaway, as I said, will take place Wednesday, May 30th. They started chess and today will be the third chess club meeting. And it's been very successful. They've had young people and, and fathers and adults hovering over the games of chess. So it's been a real hit. Let's see. So far, oh, and they completed the banner for which the Friends gave them funds for the materials and they, they made the banner, "I love the library", with the various handprints of, of the children and the parents. And so that's posted at the library. And they also had a color activity. And I, I think that may have been on Saturday, I'm not sure. Because being open now on Saturdays has been really brought in the younger people who have trouble coming during the week. They had an appearance at the Elgin School event. They had a booth set up and a book giveaway. And they've been invited to an educational event at the fire department. And Denise has approved that, suggested that. And so they will be doing that, I think. I'm not sure the date of that, but they will be doing a booth there, probably book giveaway as well. So this is, they've been extremely busy this, this past month. Okay, any other, any other reports?
Got a question. Is the remodeling and expansion of the library facility in Sonoyta still in progress?
It hasn't really begun extent, no. But we will get a report, I hope, next month from Juan Valderras. But they have not begun any work yet, that to my knowledge, no. It hasn't, nothing to report. Okay.
Did he report last month? And if so, what did he say?
Well, it would be, it would be in the minutes. I'm trying to remember if he. Yes, he, wasn't he last, he was here last month. Not much. They, I think he discussed the, the internet, the internet contract is what he spoke about. Yeah, but not as far as construction, reconstruction, that has not come up. So I do look forward to his presence in June because it's, time is moving on. Okay, all right. So we will go to the library director's report.
I do want to let the library board know that we had library assistant interviews last Friday. We had 13 candidates. And we are having a follow-up interview today at 2:00 PM with three of those candidates. And those candidates will be trained for two weeks at Nogales, well, whichever candidate is chosen. And from there, they will be at the Rio Rico Library with Clarissa. Because when Luis Oviedo resigned, we needed somebody for the teens to carry out the programs for National Library Week. So now Victor is in charge of the teen programs here in Nogales. And as I mentioned before, the Tubac Library Assistant, that position will go into effect July 1st. And I'm just going to keep going and outreach events. Staff was sent out to the mental health awareness fair on Hope Inc., May 1st. They gave away library information. We got information. So we are able to refer patrons that have issues or if they have program, or if they have questions about mental health, we're able to refer patrons. As Anna mentioned, staff was also at the Patagonia Reading Fair. And as Juanita mentioned, there was a school event at Elgin. That's for now for the outreach events. We do have some outreach events at the high schools coming up in July on Saturdays, which I'm going to be sending out staff to in Rio Rico and Nogales. Activities and programs that have happened, we had National Library Week events at all the libraries. And I'm just going to let you know what we had for the week of April 24th. We had the police storytime at the Nogales Library, board games at the libraries. We had arts and crafts. We had the sheriff visit the Sonoyta Library. The kids were so excited. We got really great pictures. They're on Facebook. We still continue to have Tech Tuesdays at Nogales. So if you know of anybody that needs help, we're, staff is available to help. We also had the garbage truck workers, garbage truck on work at the Nogales Library. And staff here from the Public Works Department came and showed the kids how the, how the garbage truck works, what their duties are. The kids and the parents just loved the program. It was a really good community program. Lego time, the postmaster did a, postmaster on work was also another program that was at Sonoyta Library. The kids went to the post office, they saw how a post office works, what the postmaster does. So there's various programs going, going on at the different libraries, Lego time. And we also had teens do the window art. So if you're ever by the, the main library, the big windows, they're still, the teens painted. There was a theme, there was no theme, but it had to like stain a theme of all together at the library. And we didn't know how it was going to work out. We spread the word, we let the teens know. Victor started talking to different teens that were coming in. And we got, I think throughout the week, we had over 20 teens come in and just paint. And they continued to paint during the week. So if they didn't come on that specific date, they were more than welcome to continue painting. And they finished, I know one girl did Starring Night and another girl did Sailor Moon. They did Star Wars, they did dinosaurs, they did different themes. And it was, it was a great project. And it brought the teens in and it, teens are still coming in, into the library. I'll have the, oh, and then we had Star Wars displays for May 4th. So all the libraries, I told them, you know, do a book display, a challenge, see which library, you know, comes out on top. And each library did their own display. The, the pictures are on Facebook as well. And staff got really creative. And there were prizes. Kids at the Sonoyta Library came dressed up. The teens in Nogales took some bracelets. And in Rio Rico, they also got some goodie bags in Tubac. So there's different, different things going on. And I'll have Denise talk about the last three, three items on there.
Good morning. Our summer reading program is one of our biggest programs at the libraries. This year, Tubac and Sonoyta are going to be incorporated in the summer reading program, which is a first. The summer reading program starts this Thursday for Rio Rico and Nogales. For Sonoyta, I'm not sure the hours because due to the fact that they're going to be open Saturdays, they're going to change the hours, so it's not going to be the same. Tubac also has a summer reading program. Our summer reading program, we have, it's going to run for, I believe it is, one, two, three, four, four Thursdays. And it's going to end in a surprise. We're not going to let the kids know what the surprise is. And it's more than anything to promote literacy, have the kids read during the summer, doing it a fun way for them to enjoy the books. We've been getting a lot, our summer reading program, actually, it got full on the first two weeks. So it was, I'm glad to see that the community is actually doing more events for the children during the summer. Speaking of the summer reading program and having more teens coming to the library, we are planning and we are going to work with Circles of Peace to do a summer reading program for the teens this year. That's going to be the first for the libraries as well. We are still working on that, but the teens are going to have a summer reading program as well with different events and different crafts. Staff, well, staff and I are going to go do Summer Library Institute Workshop up in Prescott. It is a week long. We leave next Sunday. And we're going to have a dorm experience. So we're going to be at the University Open in Prescott. And this is my first time going to that one. So it's going to be a new experience for me and for staff as well. I got the opportunity to attend the Leadership Institute up in Maricopa. I would say that's, that has been my favorite of all the ones I've been to. I got the opportunity to connect with other librarians. And I learned a lot. I really liked it because it was more like of an interacting type of training. It wasn't more like just sitting down and listening to somebody talk. It would be like, share your experiences, give each other tips. And what are you going through that they're going through that you guys can fix together? So it was like a lot of interaction with librarians from the state. And I feel really, really proud to have been going up to that institute because our branches are incredible compared to other people, to other people branches and to other libraries. We've been doing a really good job. Libraries up there have 50 employees and they have issues and they're, I'm like, well, we're not that many, but we get to do a lot of things. We're the only library that has a mobile, mobile library. So that was the first, seeing that Phoenix and all those libraries don't have a mobile library, I was like, oh, well, we have one. And they were all asking questions. They were like, how does it work? How, how does it incorporate with the library? So that's something we're doing. Something else that our libraries are doing that other libraries don't do is outreach programs. They're struggling a lot with people coming into the library. So they wanted ideas on how they can get people interested in the library. So I spoke up about our experiences, how we go out to the community now. And that brings the community into our library. So I really want to thank Denise for giving me and staff the opportunity to go out and learn more and get more ideas and, and share our experiences with other librarians around the state. And we, we do have an email where we get in contact and be like, hey, this is going on in my library. How do you guys fix it down there? Or this or that. So it's, it's been a real good, it was a really good institute. And I'm looking forward to this other one to see how, how it's going. And that's, that's my part.
Thank you.
I do want to add just really quick that the other two staff members that were accepted to the Library Institute, because they applied and they got a scholarship that is paying for the whole, for the entire week. So that was, it's a whole week. Clarissa Martinez from the Rio Rico Library and also Laura Rodriguez are children's coordinators. So the three staff members applied and they will all be going. And I also just want to invite the board, if interested. We are going to have a centennial meeting on Tuesday, May 30th at the Senior Center at 9:30. Anyone, whoever from the board wants to come will be there. And that's it.
9:30, the Senior Center, okay. Do you have any feedback, any comments, questions? Let's start it, Brian?
Thank you, I've got quite a few. Excuse me, what meeting are you having on May 30th?
Centennial Committee Meeting.
Okay, and what time?
9:30 in the morning at the Senior Center here in Nogales.
9:30, 9:30, Centennial Committee, okay. All right, thanks. Okay, other questions? Going back again, since I wasn't here in April. I believe in March, wasn't a gentleman introduced as, as a potential new member? And I don't see his name on the list. What occurred? And you, is that public information or?
He was, his name was replaced by the Board of Supervisors.
It was replayed?
Yeah, he was.
Not appointed?
Not appointed.
Yeah?
So we, no.
Okay, okay, that answered, okay, thank you. Second question, again, back in March, I mentioned to you the possibility of a vacancy in the community center in Tubac. And I encouraged you to inquire about that. Did you do that?
Yes, and Kate Penland wants to have it both be like for the library, not just for the library, but for the entire community center. So like a shared space, that's what they're looking at. That was the last I heard of that. And from there, I haven't.
Shared space for other, other groups?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's unfortunate, all right. Then again, another thing I mentioned to you last week, the week before, was a laptop borrowing program in libraries in California. Did you look into anything like that? Where people actually, this is where you could check out a laptop in lieu of checking out a book.
Right, yeah.
Go ahead.
I did look into it and it's something that we could probably start either in Tubac and Sonoyta. We do have different, from the grant, because I did reply, and we do have different laptops and little, what are those? The tablets that have been lent out right now at the library, they're in-house right now. Just because we do want to set up a system where they come back. Because we did have, a few years ago, we did lend out the Legos. When we first got the Legos, we tried doing that during the pandemic. And we lent out more than 20 sets and they never came back. So we're working on a system and I think the best ones right now to try out, try out either tablets and laptops would be Sonoyta and Tubac. So we're going to work on that.
Okay. Again, another thing, earlier in your budget report, you said that you were not going to open up on Saturdays because the staff was doing outreach. And you just mentioned that they were going to be doing outreach at the high school in the month of July. What other outreach are you doing on Saturdays?
It depends when they, when I, we get invited. But usually I did give a list, I, I will send you the list too because it was there last month. It varies because either we, it's either the high schools, it's either the arts programs or it's different events. And it, they usually fall on a Saturday. And so that's where our Saturdays are. So I'll send you the list so you can, so you can see where those events are.
Okay, thank you. And last of all, Denise, I thought your report was very well written. Thank you, that's all.
Marva?
I have a question about Rio Rico, the new employee. Did you hire somebody yet?
That was, those were the interviews that we had last week and the follow-up that's going to be today. So that person will be hired and hopefully they will start in the next pay period. So they will start mid-June. They will be trained in Nogales for two weeks. And then hopefully we will get them to Rio Rico in July.
So you haven't selected yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Ed?
I'm fine.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
I do. I'm really excited about the part that library is taking in, in the mental health field in, in the community. Oh, I'm going to cry, sorry. I just asked Denise for a young person with suicidal intentions. And I said, you know, do you have books? And just right before the meeting, and she is going to help us, you know? So library is more than just a library. I mean, we, you, you try, you know, to reach all people. So I'm very impressed. And the report was fabulous. And I'm, I'm really proud of how Nogales is portrayed throughout the state. And I know that during the centennial celebration, the Arizona Library Association members, two of them were here and they were just incredulous at the span, age span, the diversity of the groups and, and everything else that's going on. So, so I'm just going to put a plug in for myself here because I forgot to mention it on, on my own. But I won't be able to be at the centennial meeting on the 30th because through the county school superintendent's office, which has the, the literacy bus and the mobile library, we have the Book Save Lives training all of next week at the 1904 Courthouse. Anybody is invited to just drop in to be able to, if, if you're interested. But we have people from Circles of Peace and we have people from the different mental health and domestic violence agencies and stuff. It's not just teachers. So everybody in the, in Santa Cruz County right now is really working on how do we connect our kids to, to books? But the library, all, all, all parts of the library have just been very helpful and vibrant. And I so appreciate it, but thank you for all you do.
Okay. I have a question. After the garbage truck came, did you notice that all of your garbage truck picture books were checked out or?
Actually, we had a, a book giveaway. We did order some books and the workers gave, we raffled them and the kids took little, we ordered little garbage trucks pencil holders and the kids just loved it and so did the families. So, yeah, all the books were gone.
Yeah, I thought they might be because they seemed to be very popular.
From, from your report, both of your report, can I just suggest that you let Brianna know who's in charge of the literacy bus? Your activities, I know that, that we can't have parents during the day when we're at schools, but if you have the outreach activities, please, you know, invite us. Thank you.
So I do want to mention something else. Besides all of this, myself, Karina Martinez, Carol Lager and Victor have been taking ASL classes. So we're learning sign language to be able to communicate with those people that are hard of hearing at the library. So we are taking those courses on Mondays. So that's something that we're adding on top of our job duties as a librarian. And at the Library Institute, I got the chance to speak to an Arizona librarian. She was really happy with the centennial celebration. And she told me that anything we needed for the library, she was there to help. And that she's really excited. They're looking into what they can put in the time capsule. So they're really excited about that.
Good. Well, thank you for this, these very good reports. And now we're going to look at future agenda items. We are hoping to see the Sonoyta, have a Sonoyta building update. And let's see, and security, I assume Lieutenant Bermudas or someone will be coming from the police. And anything, and the sculptures, the time capsule, the time capsule. Is there anything else you would like to add to the agenda? No. You know, there is something I would like to add, this is maybe, well, the, the idea of book banings and, you know, security for libraries, because I know you haven't experienced this in any of the libraries. We are, we are bored, the library bored, and that is generally where, at public meetings where these issues come up for public libraries. So maybe we need to become more aware of what, how our response, you know, so that we can, we won't be completely, not should that occur.
The unfortunate thing is that it's a national call.
Yes, there.
By, from the media, that it's being directed to the media or that the media is absorbing it, may be questionable and broadcasting it as much as possible. And there are so many crazies out there in this world that impacts it directly.
Well, I would.
So we need to be, I just think that we need to be ready for anything.
Yeah, and perhaps you are familiar with how libraries, you know, have been reading about some of the situations. And if we have a response in our library system, you know, for the library, and we might want to do some research as board members.
Maybe the Arizona Library, oops.
The Arizona State Library might be able to give us some information.
Yeah, they might have training. They might have something where we would participate in their training.
As possible.
To make us more aware.
Because it has not been an issue, thank heavens, but it's something that we probably need to be aware of and ready. Okay, I believe our next meeting is June 14, Tuesday, June 14 here. And do I have a motion to adjourn? A second? All right, this meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is adjourned.